I'm going to call the Springfield City Council Work Session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillor Weber.
Here.
Councillor Bo.
Here.
Councillor Rodley.
Here.
Councillor Doyle.
Here.
And Councillor Pitts Mary.
Here, thank you.
Alright, first item tonight is the interim Ward Four councillor interview process, that's a mouthful.
I know.
It's like a finance resolution name.
Okay, we're here this evening to talk about the next step in the process for the Ward Four vacancy. And before we dig into the number of applicants and next up with the interviews, I just want to talk briefly about the schedule. So meeting tonight in work session to go over the applications and format for the interview questions, that kind of thing like we've done before. April seventeenth, which is your next regular meeting, you're scheduled for forty-five minutes of work session for interview time. And then later in the meeting, you'll deliberate, but that will be during the regular session. So so you'll have a break there, get into the regular meeting, then come back to this item. And then we put to be determined for the actual swearing in. So once you vote, once you deliberate and vote on somebody, then technically that person should be sworn in. Most likely would be at the next meeting or depending on their schedule, we could either do it at a special meeting or the next regular meeting, but that's what the TBD is there. So then, once they're sworn in, then they're on. So. Moving down to looking at what we want to talk about tonight, you have five applicants in your packet. So some of the questions that we're hoping to have answered tonight would be, you know, of the five applicants, are you interested in interviewing everyone? How you want that interview to look in terms of, last time you had a vacancy, we were all online. So these interviews most likely would be in person, what you'd like the format to be on, so you can measure time most effectively when it gets to the seventeenth. And then the other attachment to the packet are some sample questions. There are ten questions there. Last time you actually asked seven questions, you picked from there, you took some out. You also added a question about the relationship between the city council, the city manager and staff. Just to see if a person, what their perspective is on that relationship. Seven questions and then I believe last time you did interview everyone as well. So I don't know what you'd like to talk about first, but I'm happy to take your questions or feedback and then we can get to our process.
Alright, any questions or feedback? About three questions. Okay, so first question that we're going to answer is, we want to interview everybody.
I, there's three that I would like to.
Okay.
I don't feel like I, after reading the applications, it would be me too. I'm not getting, it's not a hill. Like if everybody's like, we want to see everybody, that's fine, but I have three that I'm like, these are the folks I would like.
So give me your three.
CJ Mann, June Fathergill and Beth Blackwell.
A fish?
I'm okay with three.
With a different three?
Really?
Victoria?
I have the same three.
Okay. I'm seeing some heads.
You guys go ahead.
Okay, so it seems like we have three. It's going to be CJ, June, Beth.
Okay. So that'll give you a little over ten minutes per person, you know, you have forty-five minutes by the time you kind of get in there and said, you know, get going. Do you want to now shift to the questions to see what you think about?
Let's do, let's do the questions and sort of.
Format.
Yeah.
Okay.
So. Last, I went back to look at what we did last time and I actually just read the questions and then you gave me feedback on each of them. Does that work? I mean, otherwise we like circle around these all the time. Okay. Alright, so here we go. Looking at the, in the packet, your primary reasons for being interested in being on city council is the first question.
Are you looking for keep or kill it?
I'm looking for keep or kill.
Yeah.
Alright.
Keep.
And they already answered that in their application. That's why I don't understand why we ask questions that are already asked and answered.
So. Let's, let's come back, let's come back.
Okay.
Okay, so let's just keep going.
Okay, unique abilities and experiences that you would bring to the council?
Yeah.
I have mixed feelings about that one. I mean, I think it puts people into pressure, kind of under pressure. You know, would you be like, why am I special? I care more about, you know, like some of these other questions about what they care about and how they want to like solve these problems, but, but I'm just one person. It's just like, that one is not, is not a big one for me.
On, you know, that one, the unique abilities, experiences, how I read that or what I would be looking for is if there's something, some special skills that they may possess and bring to the council. I mean, like Victoria's got a background in planning and, you know, etc. I've got some public safety, Michelle's got different boards. Steve's got an incredible background that he brings to council, so that's what I would be looking for as an answer. And I know what Corey's saying and that makes sense. I don't want to sit there and say, hey, what makes me so special, but really it's like, okay, what? What, what do you bring to council? So maybe it's just the wording, Corey?
Maybe. I mean, again, like I'm just one person who's just like, oh, that one's can be kind of tough.
Okay, so let's, let's go with our initial cut here and like get through that. So let's put two on the parking lot and then we'll come back to it.
How do you define success and how do you know you are successful?
This one I wouldn't, don't need at all.
Yeah, I don't, you like to, nobody like that.
There's three, nobody's in love with this question? Okay, kill it.
When faced with a complex problem with multiple solutions, what process do you use to select the best?
Excellent question.
Oh, hang on, I don't know.
What do you like best about Springfield and why?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Alright, five's in.
If there are three things in Springfield you're permitted to do, whether it be to add, eliminate or change, or what those.
I'm going to stick with three and we'll just say. If you have the ability to make changes in the city, what would you do?
Yeah, I'm okay with not having to answer.
You don't agree?
Is it the number that people are, I saw some grimacing too. Is it the number or is it that kind of question?
Could you say what are there, or what's, what are some things that you?
I mean, in three?
Is that okay?
Can you start thinking three and that could get really?
I only got two.
Yeah, that's right. If you don't, you're right, you're out. What would you change or what things would you change?
It is what things, yeah.
So it gives me options to say one.
Okay.
Okay.
Do that. And let's see. Number seven, what have you done to further your vision?
That's one that's still close.
Yeah, I don't like that one.
I do make it louder. I've got to change my attachment.
Personally, this is a personal. It's helpful to add stuff to re-attitude. That's I figure. Alright.
As since there are six city council positions, what do you believe are the advantages and disadvantages of collective decision-making and shared leadership?
I like that one.
Councils are elected citywide rather than by ward. What are the advantages or disadvantages of this process?
I want to know the answer to that because that's a.
I'm like asking myself.
That's why we're asking them to get.
You're good job interviewing. You guys can help us understand.
I like it.
Ten, what is your greatest life accomplishment to reach?
I don't know.
Do we allow them to ask us questions?
At the end.
Okay, good.
Yeah, we'll get into the format piece. So how many did we say yes to?
So. Five, which is one a piece.
Perfect.
You want the question about relationship between staff council and city manager?
Yes.
I do like that.
Yeah, I think it can now, and that will give us all.
We'll give you one question to ask. I wouldn't, and you don't have to make up a new question this time, but I also, part of me would love it if we asked people if they, like. Something about what is your understanding of what policy decisions are? And that kind of gets to that, but again, like I am one person, but I think that that's one of the things that sometimes it's like hard to grasp, it's like the truth of policy and administration.
Yeah.
Yeah, Victoria.
Can we get the opportunity to ask a question if we, if we ask each person, but if we have a personal question that we think we'd like to ask? Are we allowed to do that?
Personal question or follow-up?
Follow-up. So you can only do follow-up?
Yeah.
So we try and have, oh, I'm sorry, cut you off. Go ahead.
My understanding is that if you have applicants for a position, you have to ask the same questions of people.
Correct. That's why I'm saying if I had a question that I wanted to ask and I could ask all three people.
So you want to add questions to the list?
I got you.
We should, if, if you have a question that you want to add, we should add.
We should add it in.
Address it.
Do you have a question you're missing? Because I have a question.
I mean, now you think city council should be paid.
Well, that's a question I have to get on board. Okay, so I do, I do have one question that, that, that is only applicable to one of these candidates. CJ Mann's filed for one amelie.
Yes.
And I, and, and her, what her thoughts are and experiences or like what, like what happens if she wins for both, right? That seems, that seems relevant to our decision-making. Since we're not asking everybody, we can do it one of two ways. One of them is I could just ask that at the end, or you know, we could just put that back out to her in an email and put it in the packet.
Alright, that latter one. As opposed to ask her again. Should you just send her the thing or somebody call her or whatever? Oh, we have a. Yeah, it just feels like you have to thought. You've got to thought.
Well, no, I, I mean, that, that does come up, right? Because it's not an unusual situation. I think it would, I mean, and be, I've been on the same, I think, you know, in the interest of the public hearing that answer, or I would, I would suggest doing that at the very end, you know. To unique circumstance.
Especially.
Because I guess we have to, we have someone on the council that is in a position with, but not necessarily a partner. Springfield, but L E D is still a, you know, an appointment. So I think that that's something that's relevant to ask.
Yeah, so.
And I think we actually have a rule, right? Like we have a thing in our.
Well, I don't think it's illegal, right? Like she could sit on both of them.
Yeah.
But we made it part of council procedures.
So let's, let's do this. We all are interested in that answer, right? Like let's, you know, I will ask it at the end when, when I wrap up. And then if you could put it, yeah, just add, I guess add it to the list and then, you know.
I think we should know. Yeah, so you'll ask her at the end, so it's part of the general discussion. We could send you like a confidential and privileged memo with sort of the legal, like, hey, here's, here's the deal on this. And so you, so where, so then you're walking it knowing.
That, that would be helpful.
I mean, it'll be like two paragraphs, but that way it's, we're not like, you know, as she's answering or anything like.
Right, like we just got a plan for it and like, but included in the package, so you know it's there and I will ask it at the end.
We don't know if the other applicants may have applied as well, so maybe it is something to ask and put in a way that we could ask all three applicants. Are you interested in other boards and committees too, or have you applied? And you can do it so that it was all three.
I don't think I've seen anybody else. Yeah, just find out.
Okay, it's already on the ballot. Gotcha.
Yeah.
I think the only issue that the angst that, that brought all this up was the, was the potential, the scope of influence or the scope of authority that the person may be able to exercise in his community holding multiple positions. And that was the biggest concern. You know, what kind of influence, decision-making influence where they have these or other agencies because of that, of, of authority.
Okay, so I think we got the questions.
Yep.
Mary Blade was going to update it. We're going to add the one for CJ and then we're going to just talk pure. Then I think the only thing we still have is formatting.
Yes.
So I would prefer that they answer in the form of a song.
Okay.
We use background music.
It's more in person now.
Yeah.
So in person, I'm assuming that.
Yes.
Since you're here and there, yes.
Yeah.
Alright. And, and then I know this is really like down to the details, but you know, often we have like the introductions or who's asking the questions or all that can get, like take some time away from what you're trying to do. So do you want to start that out now or?
Yeah, so if you can make us a sheet to take notes on, and then, and then if we can sort questions now, I don't know if.
I'll take question number four.
I'll take the last one.
I don't care. You can assign me whatever.
We're, we're, we're going to go to me and see.
Suggestion. A lot of times, you know, obviously we've all been in the interview process either being interviewed or person doing the interviewing. It's nice to start with a good warm-up sort of softball question, and I think that might be number five. If you guys are jettisoning one and two.
I like that.
Kind of like, you know, it starts a positive beat and so.
Yeah. We will sense their feels about. I like that.
Yeah, Scott, I was actually going to let Joe answer. Rest for an aspect.
You want to do the introductions as you're asking the question?
Uh, yes.
Does that work?
Yeah, I think that works.
No way.
Or it could be, it could be you're like introduced and then ask the question and go to the next introduction.
Yeah. Would that work?
I like that.
Yeah.
Okay. And anyone else have a preference for a particular question or are you good for just, and then we'll just have it on that. Often when you have those notes, you actually have the question and the person's name, and then that way you know your question is, it's always.
You want four.
You want four. Got it.
Please.
Okay. Got that. Okay.
Leave it to Joe.
Alright. And then the mayor will have the last question.
Yeah, the decision-making processes.
You would hear the answer no matter who asked the question.
Yeah, alright, so.
Okay.
What else do we have? What else do we have to settle for the, for the actual sort of night up? And I think we're starting at five thirty that night, so we got a little bit of runway.
I think so. I think that's it. So we know the format of the interviews. We'll have the questions typed out for you with some lines for notes, so you have that ready. Then we've got three people, so we have three candidates that you'll be interviewing. I'm assuming you don't have a preference on that order and it would just be matter really on their bill, but I'm guessing if they've got something going on. And then what we can, since, since there are only three, if we want to shift a little bit to talk about voting and we can talk about, we'll talk about this more when you're deliberating. And so a little more simple, you know, before, sometimes there'll be like lots of candidates and you'll kind of weed it down or have a straw vote, but with just three. It's an easier deliberation process and we can talk about what that vote is, but it's a simple majority is what's required for appointing a council. You could go through by doing names. You could do, you don't have to do nominations or anything. It could just be, you could just say the person's. So, and if you don't get to a majority, let's say we vote, you don't get to a majority, then just vote again.
Right. Then the magic number's three.
You can scratch my preference for question number four. That makes sense what Victoria said.
It is, they're already getting feisty and it is still pretty early tonight.
Oh, no, I'm serious. I don't think it is. It's like.
It's giving you a hard time. Now I don't know what question to give you.
Give him four anyway. So if we, if we're doing good on time that night, we could start into deliberations before we get into the regular session or do we?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, you know, you can have some discussion. It just sort of naturally happens, I think, in between like interviews or at the end, and let's say you have a few minutes. I don't think you need to be that strict about it where we're like, don't talk, you want to use that time. Because I think when you get to the regular session, it's more like twenty minutes and you, you know, and you've got other support on the night, so that would make sense.
And they're both public meetings.
Yeah.
The deliberation. How we get to a decision.
Alright, so are there any more questions about this process? Hopefully we are close to the finish line and we will get there shortly.
Okay.
Just, I think one item to add, just so we're on the same page, the candidates will arrive, will they be in the room for the entire, will they be outside? We should just make sure it's.
Do you prefer that they're outside? I do. I mean, technically it's a public meeting, they can.
I don't have.
I don't think they will. I don't think they'll want voluntary.
No, like it, yeah, I'm a little surprised. Yeah, I don't think we can tell them either way. My preference would be that they would be outside just to, you know, allow for a more seamless, seamless space, but.
For the person who's being interviewed.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, but you know, you've got to have some skin, be tough skinned.
Nothing like running.
I had the interview in front of everybody.
Alright.
Lots of everybody.
Are there any other questions, concerns, other stuff I have to talk about for Ward Four? Alright, you're good to go.
Great, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
We're getting better in that. I know you guys are getting closer to that.
We don't want to get a, they're replacing councillors.
Good job, Mary Bee.
Alright.
So seamless, Ben. Alright, good evening. Well, he didn't get the map up. I was going to have a bunch of colored pens for him to draw. And recreate it. From memory. Good evening, mayor councillors. Thank you for having us here this evening. We're here to talk about potential capital bond, kind of review what we've done, where we're at and look to the future and just looking for some discussion from the council on that. Tonight I have, I'm Jeff Pascal, Community Development Director, and with me I have Ben Gibson from Operations. He's going to run the map. And then I do have some, somebody from Finance if we get in any of those questions, but not anticipating those tonight, heavy hitters. So again, your packet prepared for you is kind of a review of the street system. The two thousand eighteen bond kind of gives a high-level review of what was accomplished, where we were at, some key points. With ten million dollars, we were able to rehabilitate and preserve four point seven miles worth of road. Compare that to, when you look at the map, which was, has the red on that, compare that to like what it costs to do Mill Street just for the resurfacing and reconstruction, less than a mile of road. And I estimate, this is just a high-level estimate, eight million dollars if it was just surfacing, which is basically surfacing in ADA, which is what we did with the preservation. So for less than a mile. So it's one reason why we really stress the preservation piece of it and staying on top of these timely overlays, crack sealing, seals and that sort of thing, so that we don't end up with mill street roads. Some other items in here, and Ben can go through that in the, in the mapping and show you kind of where we were and where we are today with the visuals. I think there's some really neat visuals that help tell the story, but you also see in your information data that was reported to the state on our transportation system, the number of miles of collectors and arterials and fair and good condition are good and better. And then the number of miles in fair and then the number of miles in poor. Also included just for conversation, in this person, conversation amongst the council and questions, some information that was provided in previous bond that I had worked with Finance to put together or at least verify, and that's like what a bond would cost if we were to go back out and what that looks like in different dollar amount increments. And then also taking the, the, the information we have from the current projects we completed, looking at current inflation numbers and you'll see that small table that kind of will tell you with what dollars we choose or would be recommended if we were successful again about approximately twenty, twenty-three dollars that we could accomplish at different levels of a bond. With the outlet, Ben kind of show you what the mapping shows us, which is kind of gives us a picture of, of how we got to some of the numbers that were reported in the state today.
Good, good evening. The map that you see here is the product of a lot of work that was done by our G I S group as well as survey applications that we have through the use of mobile field tools. Biannally required by the state to conduct surveys of our road systems and then report those conditions back to the state where they'd be good, fair or poor. And so the information that we pull from those surveys, this is the first time that this year that we've had this type of product in the form of a heat map. And what we have highlighted for this particular conversation would be our major collectors and our minor collector roads. So for example, just to kind of give an idea on what that would be, your minor major collector roads are going to be your E streets, your G streets. If I were to turn on our minor arterials, you're going to see things like Mohawk Boulevard here. And this is a representation of the work that was done through this last bond measure where prior, we had a yellow street which would be in a fair condition versus now where it's green. And so this work is conducted over a couple of month period with my operations group. And we end up with this result. We are still a little bit that kind of playing with some of the condition numbers on how they get reported. And what I mean by that is when we drill down and look at sections where you have a red, yellow, we may jump back a year, we show all red. The reason for that being is that when we have that cutoff of like a fifty on the surface condition index, you might, you have different people looking at these. You have a different perspective. So you might have red at forty-nine and then the previous year you have a fifty on that. It's kind of like a percentage base, right? And so they're really very similar, so we still have to dive down a little bit to figure out what that, what the actual condition is. But then, you know, aside from that, we go in further to get more into the weeds with taking soil samples and stuff for base. The conditions are reported on base failures, ravelling, cracking, rutting and delamination of the roadways was the five conditions we used. The base failure being the one that kind of gives us the most trouble with how the conditions are reported on because we can't see what's under the, in that substructure. And we kind of have to determine what the surface looks like to be able to come up with that, that number there. David, this is what we have for our mapping, I think, to this conversation, we're looking at some of these yellow streets, right?
So I, yeah, so we have a couple of questions for the council at following discussion and direction that we're seeking, which is, should we consider preparing materials for council to consider future bond? Ask. And then if yes, direction on potential amount that the council might agree upon or give us direction to go out and look at so that we can take this mapping and start and give us kind of an idea of projects or areas or things like that. So then we'll take this, we'll start looking at these in more detail, trying to put some high-level cost estimates together and actually start doing some more of the testing. One thing that I will say, when we did the last bond, which we were really kind of scrambling to put all the stuff together. We were successful. We got all of the segments that we said we were going to get done for ten million dollars. It was, you know, we had to do some work and some legwork because some of the roads were in a little bit worse condition than we estimated off the surface. So what I would like to do with council direction is go back and actually do a little bit more in-depth stud inspection. Maybe do some pouring and some testing, have the county come out. They do a testing process where they can tell us what the condition of the base really is under the surface. And then we can come back with a better picture of what we could potentially get done with different size bonds and then give a better picture of which roads might be better candidates for preservation and which ones, even though they look okay on the surface, really have a lot more reconstruction or, or things that we can't see underneath going on.
Yeah, I have a question. Around, it's really around the decision-making as you go and you look at this, because it sounds like, you know, we're looking at this very much considering the surface of this, these roads. But one of the things I'm curious about is as we move forward and make decisions, are we layering this with any other sort of infrastructure investments? Or looking at, okay, there's going to be a lot of development over here. When we start to prioritize them, do we weave in the other work that we want to do to like invest in the infrastructure of the city and where things are going to go? That would harder than our now.
I, I would say yes, we have those conversations with staff. I, I wouldn't say that we have a set policy or written down, but when we meet as a group, we talk about that. Mark Colametto's, you know, all of those homes and that new traffic load hitting that, we have conversations. You go out, you drive Markola Road. It's in, it looks on the surface, it's in great state, but if you look at it, it's starting to ravel, it's starting. So it's like, okay, is it now the time to go out there and do a surfacing project on there as we're starting to see these new trip counts on there? And it is one of our major arterials and it's one of our key truck routes. So yes, those conversations do ha- happen. I, I would just say we just haven't thought about a set policy. Sometimes we try to tie them together too, like Mill Street's an example. We're repaving a whole street. Well, we, we start looking at the sewer and the stormwater underneath and making sure if we're going to repave this road, we want to make sure that infrastructure is actually sound and hasn't also reached the end of its use. If it's close, it's time to replace it ahead of a paving project.
Okay, good. Yeah, that's, was, that exactly answered the question. So I guess we're talking about all of these things. I want to know how it all fits together. And that does, for me, it informs the decision-making about how much to invest in, if we think about how much we're, or how much to go out for based on all the things we're hoping to do.
I would say the key to that is it's not just myself making the decision, it's not just Ben making the decision. We actually have staff. We sit down and we talk about each of the projects and the roads in a, in a meeting and then we come together and we look at those and try and make the best decision possible for the recommendation to the council. Victoria?
First off, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for the work that you've done. Myself as well as Mayor Sean and ex-mayor, or ex-councillor Stare, we were on that committee that went out to the public and we had to convince the public that this was a good project and that you were going to, we were going to do what we said we were going to do and you guys did that. And I think that that makes it even easier for me to now be supportive and, and say to the community, look, we did what we. And I think that that makes it even easier for me to now be supportive and, and say to the community, look, we did what we said we were going to do. And now we need to continue that good work and it's because of the work that you've done over the last five years. So I just wanted to tell you that I'm one hundred percent supportive of whatever we need to do to get these projects done. Because the infrastructure to me is paramount and you guys have done a great job, so.
So I know we're going to have a couple of conversations about this, um, so I'm going to kind of break down the questions that I'm, I'm hearing people. I'm hearing, yes, people are interested in pursuing a bond, which, um, the timing really is important to, important to me. Uh, like, like, um, we really, I'm thinking May, right? And that's specifically so we can hit the twenty-five construction season. Because the, you know, if, if we can go out in November and hit the twenty-five construction season, then I would be more interested, but I don't see a way we could do that.
You're saying May of twenty-four?
We would go, I, I think we should go out May of twenty-four, that'll give us plenty of time to develop the conversation with the public. Sort of begin to size the projects and then, and then be able to hit the twenty-five construction season. That way we're not rushing like we did last time.
We, we were able to hit the next construction season, but it was a push.
Um, when we, when we come back for more projects, I would really love to see at the top of that, just an update on. Forty-second Street and Mill Street were the two big things, like they're not probably are going to be in this bond, but it's going to be the two big things in public.
I can give you a quick update today. Um, Mill Street anticipating being out for bid in the late spring or early summer. Next, are actually opening bids in late spring twenty twenty-four. So might have be in the midst of negotiating contracts in during an election. With construction being obviously, I, I, I was talking to Christie today for Capital Projects Manager and I'm, I'm. Anticipating probably breaking ground on that sometime July of twenty-four would probably be most realistic.
So on that's timing, I think every, but every time we talk about a potential bond, just keep telling us that. Because the more, because people need, we, we told people we're getting Mill Street done, we're going to get Mill Street done. But that timing piece is going to be the critical piece.
And on Forty-second Street, we actually received proposals today for a consultant company at the direction of council leadership. To take some of the twelve million dollars to do a ten to fifteen year surfacing project, update some of the ADA pieces. Um, reason it's ten to fifteen years and I say that because in ten to fifteen years, if we don't have a levy project, the road will look about the same. But not wanting to put a lot of money in to fix all of the problems, but an interim fix until we identify the funding for a levy to reconstruct the levy. Cause the reconstruction of the levy will wipe out the whole road and have to reconfigure the whole, the whole street there.
Um, so what kind of guidance, do you need guidance on money, timing?
I, I think an idea of size, you know, if it's the ten to fifteen, fifteen to twenty, what, what size? So that we can, I mean, we can easily go back and kind of scope all of these. Um, the reason I put the, just as a, a, if, if you could turn on all of the, and show like clear out to Thurston, the minor arterials too.
You want?
Yep, that, so you see all of the yellow kind of circle that yellow between one twenty-six and Main Street and those two out in Thurston. I, I estimated that was like nine or, uh, twenty-five million dollars to basically eliminate all of the yellow in that area, just as an idea. And so when you look at like twenty million dollars, that tells me seven point four miles, I didn't get the numbers from GIS. But that would probably be everything encompassed by one twenty-six and Main Street out there excluding the two mill, Thurston roads.
Everything east of that?
Everything from I five to one twenty-six there, Fifty-second Street and Main to one twenty-six. I, I, that's just off of visual estimating, but it was the sense, just the sense of how far different dollars would go. And I'm, I'm just like, from a, from an operation standpoint, eliminating all of the yellow in there to green would be a huge step. The one thing about red is, is that's the Mill Street. The reality is those roads are the condition they are, they're going to get worse, but they're not going to, they're, they're always going to be reconstruction projects. And as you saw what, and I use the eight million estimate, they kind of come up with that. One, a hundred and eighty-seven million plus dollar figure to eliminate all of the red that we have out there in the system.
The red doesn't have any best case scenario?
No, no, no. Yellow does, if we, the more yellow we turn to green, the more money we save ourselves down there.
Yeah, and that's your recommendation right now would be to try to get, save some of the yellow guys.
Yeah, we want to save as many of those and, and that, you know, when I, uh, what was, I guess something I should have realized. But when I looked at today's inflation, if you notice, we probably made headway on the miles of streets. And moving more miles to green, to really good condition. But if you notice, if you look back at the previous packet from two thousand eighteen, we estimated that we have a, had a thirty-five to forty million dollar backlog, backlog on those preservation projects. Where we have today forty million dollars, so we're never really going to be catching up on the dollars with inflation. But what we can do is start shrinking that number of miles.
Okay, so Cory.
So, and I appreciate how you, you, um, kind of helped to that. And again, with the, the, like, I'm one person and we have been spending so much effort on like, how do we invest in infrastructure? How do we make it easier for you to put the bill, how do we do all of these things? So I personally would be interested in looking at that fifteen to twenty million and even looking at like the ten-year, you know, looking at a longer range. So that we just are like, this is our focus. Um, because I, and I've told the mayor this, you know, because it's in my neighborhood. I firmly believe, and people can tell me I'm wrong, that the work that we've done along at Mohawk. Has been the impetus for a lot of the development, people coming in and like putting in restaurants and doing the things that they're doing. So I think it's, uh, I mean, and this is one of the things that we as a council get to help drive. So I am interested in, you know, how do we invest in growth, so instead of thinking small, let's run it.
Joe, I agree. No, actually, I, I, I agree in even taking a step further is that. I think the public is very happy with what's occurred in the bones. I think we need to strike the iron where, strike the iron while it's hot. And I think that we ought to go with the twenty million. I have no, I, I really have very little reservations as to whether that will pass or I think the public will, will support that. And I think it's important for us to seize the moment and go and, and repair as much as we possibly can. And then we can potentially get ourselves in a position, I know it's a big bite, but it's only, it's at, at the five-year level. And, you know, short-term payoff and then keep that momentum going and. The most, I mean, it's like, if I can, if I can fix my fence in the backyard and I got the wood today and I, if I put new posts in the ground today, instead of coming back and doing it in five years. I'm going to put the new post in today, I'm just going to go for it. So I think, I think I agree that we should do the most we can, fix the infrastructure we can, go with a five-year bond, twenty million. Make a big old wish list on it and get her done.
Okay, um. Cory?
Yeah, I have, I can, I have two concerns with the length of the time, the ten-year. I'm wondering how many of those yellow streets will turn red or will they deteriorate if we do stretch it out to ten years? Um, but then I was worried about going out and asking for double the amount, right? And so that's, it, it's like, are we taking a risk by doing the twenty million and five? When we could do twenty million and ten and it would maybe be more palatable? I'd rather, I'd rather have a yes on part of it than to have a hard no, you know, so.
Well, I, I have, I, Nathan, whoa, Nathan's gone now, all right. I, I had, uh, I had talked to, um, I had talked to finance about this, I think we would get the twenty million and we would probably spend it over the five. It just is that ten years to pay it back, so it kind of puts it on that tax for the ten years.
Yeah, but I'm just thinking for people who are already taxed to death, I mean, I look at my. Property tax bill, which is almost three times what it was in Cottage Grove. And it's like, we're telling people, okay, we're going to double the amount we, you know, I mean, a hundred and ten dollars versus the eighty-eight now, right?
Yeah.
It's not a big difference, a hundred and seventy-seven from eighty-eight is a lot. And so that's just my only concern, I'm not, I, I think it's a great idea and I'm willing to, to go out there and defend it, you know?
I, I think to the other part of that question too, where what, what's like about to turn red, right? Is there, I think that there is still work that we have to do, like if we get some good direction on where we're going. And we go out and we test further, we figure out, okay, is this actually a viable street or not? Or do we look at the subgrade and shoot, this one's not going to work, it's more of a reconstruct. So we would still have that work, the build to get a better list put together.
And I think that's, that's the critical part here for people to see is like, we are at the very first conversation and then we'll sort of hone on about where we want to end up. My, my sense, my sense is like, to me, starting with a twenty million dollar five-year bond, you know, and then seeing where this goes. Like where the conversation goes from there, because I think, like, I think Victoria brings up a really good point, which is like. When they go red, they get more expensive. Um, so. Any other, I guess, question, Joe?
Yeah, it, it's, I'm just, that's, my point is it's knock out as many yellow streets we possibly can with the maximum amount of money we can do it with. And I'm still get the feeling that even with the twenty million, we're not going to wipe out every yellow street. So we already know that that's kind of like a bare minimum, but my, my other. Part of my brain's thinking, politically speaking, is that, you know, Victoria brings up a great point, double taxation. However, there's other agencies that are in this area that would be and are considering their own land, using their own bonds. And so are we going to be shot out of the park when those hit the tax rolls? And is there going to be compression issues? I don't think they're, I don't think a levy, these, this bond would be a compression issue. Bonds aren't compression, I think.
That's good, because this is capital, right?
Right.
Hey, those are questions I have to ask Nathan.
I don't think so, no.
Yeah, but as far as being able to get it passed, if we can get this one passed as opposed to. That, you know, asking in five years again, or in ten years when they have others out there that we now will be competing with even greater tax dollars. So I think if we can get away with it, suspect if we can do it, get it done, this, sooner the better.
And, um, there's two other points that I want to make here, right? One of them is, this is not even talking about residential streets that are flat out turning in, into gravel that are out there that are a huge, huge issue for our neighborhoods. And I just want to point that point out, like, we're, we're dealing with the end of, you know, the fact that, you know, we didn't invest enough in streets twenty years ago. The end of, you know, timber receipts from, that we used to get a million dollars from the county to fund for our roads, right? And we're, we're cleaning that up right now. So like, I know that there are residential streets in my ward that, you know, that are basically gravel right now. And I think it's worth pointing out to the public that it's going to be a long haul here, yeah, so.
I think that that's something that, and that's feedback that I have gotten from constituents and from people in my circles is that. What about our local roads, what about the road that's, that I have to drive to get to my, my house? And so we may want to consider not just looking at the my, the arterials and stuff, but maybe throw in a few local streets in there because people see that, they, they see it. You know, and then they can feel like there's something, they're getting some value for that, for that buck that's happening in their local, like, right then.
I, I'm super glad you brought that up, you know, I was saying, so a few years ago. We had, we had a deal where the neighborhood kicked in match money. Of the, to have a street, their local street worked on. And it may be worth having a part of that, a fraction of this as to, okay, folks, why don't we do some money match? You know, you, you know, property owners, this road needs some help, we can potentially assist you.
Yeah.
And if we can do some, whatever the ratio is and reduce the cost and use part of this money to do this surface. And you kick in the other half or two-thirds or one-third or whatever it is, then we can get it done. And then you got that whole buy-in of the neighborhood, they personally see what their money got spent on and we can get it done for less.
We can definitely take a look at that and bring some ideas back to the council when we bring the project list back.
That would be great, because I can tell you, uh, one of those roads, right, Second Street from, you know, from Q to, I don't know, E probably? Right, like, that, that is a major, that, that is, like, if I, if I ask my end of the city, they would say that. But, okay, so bring us more information, um, do you want more feedback on any specific projects or do you feel like you've got enough to?
I think I have, I think we have enough, I, I, like I said, I just wanted to give a general feel, we can look at this, we'll work with operations to refine the numbers. And I think what we'll do is we'll just start digging into some of the numbers and we'll bring that information back, which I'm sure will spark more great conversation and debate on which projects are.
Yeah, I, I'm expecting you to.
Big though, I think twenty-eighth is important.
I think you, you're probably going to bring us back twenty-five million dollars in projects for us to.
Just kind of like we do at the MPO where we'll bring you that hundred and fifty percent list and whittle it down.
Um, yes, please bring that, that piece back. And, uh, the other piece that I would love to see is some of these streets have programmed dollars on them, parts of Bora do, parts of some twenty-eighths do, right? So when we come back, if you have, if there's a street that we have an answer for, can you?
Yeah, that's a great question, because we do have some street that we are doing some work on with federal dollars. And, and we can actually show you wherever still getting some work done and, and reserving some of those street fund dollars and those SDCs that we have to leverage those federal grants.
Well, if you're looking at Mohawk, that, that intersection, that strip between the overpass bridge at. There you go, going north to the intersection.
Nineteenth there, where that's the nineteen.
We programmed that, didn't we, there was that pretty in-depth.
Well, it didn't get, it didn't get, it didn't make the, as far as the grant.
That is one seriously deteriorating section.
Yeah, there's one concern there is, is addressing the transportation need, which is the intersection design too. Because it does need a, it needs a relook at the transportation network and intersection design. And so it's another one that as far as interim would be a, a good look, but.
Yeah, anyway.
So for, this will be a great conversation when it comes up. And I think for the council, I think it's important that we just, we, we just kind of prepare ourselves because the public. It expects us to fix the red streets where the potholes are and right from a, and it's a little bit counterintuitive on how to do this.
Wood second is the big one here all the time.
I know, that's, I think we're making a really great call to try to, try to get something out there from these guys.
So our goal is August, that's what we're going to have our consultant design for, our goal is to have a constructed contract for August on North Forty-second Street.
I see nothing but smiles, so when a square square person gets, gets here, we will already get a checkbox for one. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
In the other, other room. The, the, why we.
All right, I'm going to call the city council regular session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Counselor Weber.
Here.
Counselor Mo.
Here.
Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Doyle.
Here.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Here, thank you.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under one principle of liberty and justice for all.
First item, please.
Uh, first item is Springfield upbeat. This is, uh, item number one is a mayor's recognition for food waste prevention week proclamation, a mayor, this is your item.
Whereas up to thirty-five percent of all food produced is thrown away rather than, than eaten. Safe and nutritious food that is currently thrown away could help feed hungry people. Whereas a family of four could save an average of eighteen hundred dollars a month, or eighteen hundreds on uneaten food annually. Whereas the K three twelve schools and universities have a special role in educating the next generation to reduce and recover recycled foods. I, Sean Van Gordon, Mayor Springfield proclaim April tenth through the sixteen twenty twenty-three Food Waste Prevention Week. And encourage all residents to commit, uh, to reducing food waste. And I believe Dan from the county is here. All right. Next item.
Next item is groundwater guardians and Megan Murphy is here for that staff report.
Good evening, and Megan Murphy, I work for the city and environmental services.
I was supposed to be here tonight with Amy Chinets from SUB, but she had a family emergency and is not going to make it. So, I, you just give me, um, twenty twenty-two was Springfield's twenty-sixth year as a designated groundwater guardian community. I am thrilled to join you tonight to celebrate this accomplishment. Our groundwater guardian team spreads the message of drinking water protection. A main focus of that message is preventing the release of hazardous materials and other harmful chemicals onto the ground or into our stormwater system. This map that we have projected tonight is a key resource that guides our protection efforts. It shows the Springfield wellhead protection areas. On this map, each well or wellhead has colored lines around it. Those shapes, which we call time of travel zones, map the flow of groundwater in the aquifer when wells are pumping. In other words, if a molecule of water dropped onto the ground and moved down to the water table, how long would it take for that molecule of water to reach a pumping drinking water well? Likewise, if a contaminant reached the water table, how much of a risk might it pose to our drinking water wells? This map helps us understand the areas of our community that are most sensitive to groundwater contamination. And it is an indispensable, indispensable tool for communicating the how and the why of groundwater protection. We have used it and its earlier versions for almost three decades, but the key message remains the same, that our drinking water source comes from right here in Springfield. As a member of the city's stormwater team, I work with SUB to ensure that both our groundwater and stormwater are protected throughout Springfield because they are connected in so many ways. For example, runoff soaks into the ground within some of our green stormwater infrastructure, like rain gardens, which helps to replenish our drinking water supply. While allowing runoff to soak into the ground as a host of environmental benefits, we must make sure that that water is clean to protect our aquifer. Amy and I recently worked with the U of O on a project to examine our development code and design standards for groundwater protection. The recommendations that came out of this project will help secure both the quality and quantity of our drinking water for the future. If anyone would like more information about our water protection programs, you can contact me with the city or Amy at SUB. Thank you so much for supporting our groundwater guardian team.
Thank you so much. All right. Does anybody want to make a comment about groundwater? I missed my script, so just hang on. All right, so since we've begun the meeting tonight, there are going to be two designated, uh, times for public testimony this evening under public hearings and business from the audience. If you're attending in person, please complete the request to speak card located at the entrance of the council chambers and give them to the city recorder. If you're joining us online with a tablet or smartphone and wish to speak at either of those times, please raise your hand, uh, in Zoom. The order of public testimony will be as follows. Anyone in person for the council chambers, anyone who's raised their virtual hand. Next item, please.
Next item is the consent calendar.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, five yeses, zero noes. Next item, please.
Next item is you have one public hearing this evening. Public hearing number one is annexation of territory to the city of Springfield. Annex zero point three six acres of residential property located at four zero nine six North Street. That's map eighteen dash zero two dash zero six dash eleven, tax slot zero four zero zero, and concurrently annex, uh, a segment of North Street. Uh, reading into the record ordinance number one, ordinance annexing, annexing certain territory, four zero nine six North Street and approximately six hundred thirty foot long segment of North Street to the city of Springfield and Willamette Park and Recreation District, withdrawing the same territory from the Willackenzie Rural Fire Protection District, adopting a severability clause and providing an effective date. This is a first reading and Tom Severs is here for the staff report.
Good evening, mayor and counselors. I am Tom Seaver, senior planner with the current planning section. Tonight, the city council is requested to consider an ordinance to annex an approximately point three six acre property municipally addressed as forty ninety-six North Street in Southern Springfield, along with the segment of the North Street public right of way. Uh, slide two, please. The fully proposed annexation area is highlighted in yellow and the subject site is marked with a yellow star. The site is located on the corner of the North Street and Filbert Lane intersection. The applicants are the property owners and have requested annexation in order to partition the lot for future development and subsequent connection to city services. There is already a six inch sanitary sewer connection stubbed to the property in its southern frontage of North Street and future laterals will extend from the sanitary sewer within Filbert Lane. Staff also received a request by Lane County to include the unannexed segment of North Street with this application. Annexation of the street segment would not constitute a jurisdictional transfer and would remain the responsibility of the county. Slide three, please. The site is zoned R one with the urbanizable fringe UF ten overlay. As you can see, it is contiguous to city limits immediately to the northeast and west. If annexation is approved, no other zoning changes are requested except for the removal of the urbanizable fringe overlay. There are four criteria of approvable, of approval for annexations in Springfield Development Code. Criterion A, the site is within UGB and contiguous to city limits. As previously stated, the subject property is contiguous to city limits along its northern, eastern and western boundary. The subject territory is within the city's urban growth boundary and is covered by the urbanizable fringe overlay. Slide four, please. With annexation, the subject property will be removed from special districts such as the urbanizable fringe overlay and service areas such as the Willackenzie Springfield RFPB. Criterion B, the proposal is consistent with policies of the metro plan. Policies from the city's twenty thirty comprehensive plans, urbanization element specifically numbers twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty-three, thirty-four and thirty-five as found in the staff report are met through this application as the annexed land will be fully within the Springfield Urban Service Area. Criterion C, the site is within, uh, the boundary for minimum level of key urban cert, uh, facilities. Policies twenty-nine, thirty-one and thirty-two from the city's twenty thirty comprehensive plans, urbanization element are met through this application. If annexation is approved, the subject, subject territory can easily obtain key facilities and services from the Filbert Lane right of way abutting the subject site to the east. Again, these facilities and services will include sanitary sewer connection, sub water and electric service, fire protection services from Eugene Springfield Fire Department, police services from Springfield Police and the Willamette Lane Recreation District. Next slide, please. Lastly, criterion D, establish an annexation agreement. An annexation agreement has already been signed by the applicants and the city manager. The agreement covers obligations for the applicants and for the city, including any financial responsibilities. The agreement includes details on future connection to key urban facilities and services, street frontage update of the site to urbanize, or urbanizable standards and withdrawal from the special service districts. If the annexation is approved by city council, the agreement will be ready for recordation with Lane County. Because all applicable annexation criteria have been met and the annexation will help facilitate bringing this property and abutting right of way into city limits, city staff recommends that this application be approved by council. Additionally, staff requests that the public hearing be continued due to insufficient newspaper notice and the record held open until the second reading on April seventeenth, two thousand twenty, two thousand and twenty-three, in accordance with SDC five point one point six one five A. Thank you, counselors, and I'm here for any questions.
Joe.
Just a general questions. Um, when we extend and make South Redwood Drive, all of South Redwood, Redwood Drive within the city limits, correct? That's what's being asked.
No, no, sir. Uh, South Redwood Drive is already in its North Street.
So it's connecting, okay?
Yes.
And so those, there's properties there, it looks like there's about six, nine properties that are to the north and south of South Redwood Drive on the west end of that.
Yes.
And so those are still remaining outside of the city limits, still within the UGB.
Correct.
And then so we're creating an island. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Um, until there's a reason for them to be brought in through annexation, either development or a failing, um,
Septic.
Septic system, yes, uh, that, that would be a cause for that.
Which is my next question, as far as I know that to the north of there on Cherokee several years ago, we did a, um, local area improvement or, to remember the name of it, the, um,
Local Improvement.
Local Improvement District, which due to multiple several failed septics. So by bringing the city out, or if it, South Redwood is already in the city and Divas Drive is already in the city, correct?
Hmm, yes, sir.
So those properties in between that are creating that island, do we know the conditions of those, of that septic system? And then are we going to be compelling or have put us in a position to compel any of those property owners to, to connect to the local sewer system?
Correct. Uh, so we don't know the condition of any of those septics at this time, um, until they come to us with a reason, uh, that that would be sufficient, um, by annexing, uh, North Street, that would help facilitate that, um, depending on where those properties are and where they're stubbed from. They might draw service from South Redwood, or they might be able to draw from North.
So there's nothing, I guess there's nothing to compel us to check, but would that be wise for us to check?
It might be, um, I'm not sure that we could compel. I think that might, uh, not be a good way to go about that. Um, but this does certainly lay the framework for them to be able to do that.
So it seems like it'd be, this'd be a great opportunity to create some communication with those landowners for saying, look, we've had these issues in the past. How can we help you check yours? And is there a way we can help facilitate hookups so we don't have continued lead shade in that?
Yes, sir, absolutely. And I believe we would reach out to the Lane County Sanitarium for that to check.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Then I'm going to open the public hearing. And I don't have any cards for this. Neil, do we have any hands being raised for this? All right, very good. And then we're going to leave, we're going to leave the public hearing open. And this is first reading only, no action tonight. Next item, please.
Next item is business from the audience.
Okay, I've got four cards in the room. And then if you are online and wish to speak, please begin to raise your hands and queue up. First person's Jason Profit. Jason, you want to come up, give your name and location for the record, and then you have three minutes.
All right, Jason Profit here on Quarry, the end of Quarry Road, underneath the water tower. Boy, the city done really good job of cleaning up the downtown area here over the last ten years. It sharp down here. Now this federal and the state government's got you guys in a corner for the homeless camps. I suggest you put the Conestogas right here in the parking lot underneath the building, or clean out Booth Kelly Mill. And, uh, go from there. You know, I, part of this is, the homeless is the fentanyl drug stuff. And years ago, we didn't have the cannabis shops. And I think the cannabis shops had brought the addictions in. Now people's moved on to harder stuff. It's really sad to see the state and the city have to have kickback money from cannabis and lottery. That's, that's not good. I have a friend on the party department, we were talking Friday, making seven or eight trips for a Narcan.
Uh huh.
Uh, in the fiftieth street area, you know, it's probably by the time they leave, go out and take care of somebody, it's probably an hour. They're probably wasting eight hours a day taking care of this drug issue that we got. And I don't know the answer, but if you're going to have to put Conestogas in either, put them right here in the, in the parking lot or over at the Booth Kelly Mill. And I understand there's a big, I haven't seen it myself, but I understand there's a big, uh, homeless camp at the old leash shooting range. And I understand there's a big homeless camp on South Twenty-Eighth, it's a rock quarry. Kind of hidden. Most of the homeless I see is on Fourteenth and Main. Around, and right here at the library, but something to think about. I, you know, you guys are going to be in a hard spot with this, uh, we lost the Shiloh, they tore the Shiloh out, which was, everybody seen how well that went over. He got trashed with the homeless. But, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next person is Julie Sonam.
Hi, my name is Julie Sonam. I live here in Springfield on Fourth Street, South Fourth Street, across the railroad tracks. And I came tonight, I don't know if this is the right place for me to be sharing what I'm wanting to share with you. I, I, the first woman who spoke about the water, um, groundwater, I was thinking, oh, great, I have another person I can talk to because it's somebody I would like to meet. I'm really concerned about the community, about the garbage and, um, chemicals in general with the chemicals. I walk the, I live on South Fourth, so I walk roughly an hour and a half to two and a half hours a day in the morning and in the evening. And, um, I'm picking up garbage every day. There's a huge garbage problem. I know that there's four people besides myself picking up garbage because I've met them. Um, we've been doing it for a long time, like over a year. I'm sure if there's four of us, there's probably more that I don't know, um, but it's a big problem. Every day, the same routes that I walk, I'm picking up garbage on the same routes. And so I don't know what the answer is, but I think it, it's education because I left garbage in front of the Emerald Art Center and the, um, Public House and the Washburn and, um, uh, Planktown, just to see if it would get cleaned up. I left it for eight days and the exact same garbage was still there eight days later. And there was a garbage can like five feet away. So people are going in and out of these businesses and including the people that work there, and they're not picking up the garbage. And it's a big problem. I mean, I live here and I'm, I love this place. I really love it here. It's so beautiful and I really think we could do better. So I was thinking maybe some kind of education, um, like how they say, prevent forest fires. We, you know, like, you know, Smokey the Bear, but like, try to get people to want to pick up the litter or pick up the trash or ask businesses, um, send them a letter and ask them to help. In Eugene, I have my office, I'm a real estate agent and my office is in downtown Eugene. And they have people out on the street. I don't know if they work for the city, but they're out there cleaning. It's very tidy down there and they have a big problem with unhoused people and drugs in Eugene. And it's very tidy. I mean, way cleaner. And, and you guys might think it looks clean, but I promise you it's because we're out there every day picking up garbage, needles, all kinds of things. Chemicals, I'm concerned about the chemicals. I walk by the schools and I can see where they're spraying round up around the trees and around the fence lines. I just don't think it's appropriate anymore. Before we knew, we didn't know what we know now. We have water here that we drink, we have the, the rivers and the fish and, 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 you know, we, we can do better. So I have spoke at Willamette Lane and they're working on transitioning away from chemicals. And I think we should do the same. I don't think we should wait for legislation. I think we should just do it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Phil Farrington.
Good evening, mayor, counselors. Happy birthday, Counselor Weber. My name is Phil Farrington. Um, I represent and work for, uh, CDC Management Corp. Owners of the property right across the street at Fifth and, and Main Street, uh, Fifth and A Street. Uh, wanted to just applaud you first for the work that you're doing and with staff of considering developing a new, um, housing development tax exemption program. As you no doubt know, construction costs are soaring, interest rates likewise soaring. Uh, it's a very difficult time and a, and a difficult proposition to be able to build new, especially in downtown areas. Um, my request for you is to consider, I know right now that the city, uh, offers system development charge waivers for local SDCs uh, for certain developments, is to consider when you develop your housing diversity tax exemption program that you also consider, uh, applying as well, partial or full SDC credits as well. Instead of making it an either or proposition, I'd encourage you to make it a yes and. If you didn't do it for every location where you might develop the HDT program, consider places where it's yet again more expensive to develop, like downtown or in certain types of housing. Or in certain types of housing typologies like mid-rise or, or higher rise developments. Those are very expensive to develop and I think these tools combined could really be um. Uh, allowed to kind of move the dial on making development happen where it may not otherwise. One other thing to mention about system development charges is just came across by my desk today. But that the city of Portland is developing its own uh, resolution, I think on Wednesday, at the recommendation of their um. Uh, business development um, and, and planning staff. To uh, allow for deferral of S D C payments for up to twenty-four months from the date of permit issuance. Or when a property is sold, whichever is sooner. That's one of the recommendations that me and other uh, people in development community have been recommending to the state as part of their S D C analysis. Um, that's been going on since Representative Lively initiated a S D C uh, report uh, study. Um, that's been recently completed. That's the kind of a tool though that allows for a developer to. Avoid having the carrying costs for system development charges really until a project comes online. Um, up closer to the time when construction's complete and then have the space leased and sold or sold. Um, so I, I'd encourage you to consider contemplating that with your staff as well. So thank you very much for the work that you're doing. Hopefully this moves the dial. As you all know, we're in a dramatic housing crisis. And anything and everything that you're doing to try and encourage housing development is most welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. June Father Gill.
June Father Gill, um, three one seven thirtieth street in Springfield, apartment one one three C. Um, I just wanna thank you, especially for the um, willingness to. Support the work that we're trying to do to shelter unhoused women um, through Anne's Heart Women Shelter. Thank you for considering that and, and hopefully voting for that. Um, I especially also wanna thank the staff that have worked so diligently over the last year. Um, Erin Feifield and the new staff, Katie Carroll, if you haven't met her yet, um, are working on this for. A, a long time we've been working on this and so I'm really grateful for all of you and you being here and I look forward to. Um, after tonight, maybe being able to go out soon and find a house for um, Anne's Heart Lung Shelter. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last card that I have. Is there anybody that's got their hands raised online, Neil?
No hands online.
Is there any uh, council response?
I just wanna thank everyone for coming and sharing. Um, it's, I, I, I. I'm often um, very inspired by how passionate folks who live in Springfield are about all of the things that make this community livable. And the challenges that we have, and I just appreciate everyone taking the time to come down and, and share those with us so that we have a better understanding. So thank you.
Anybody else? All right, next item, please.
Next item is uh, resolution. Um, item number one, a city council adoption of a resolution initiating annexation of tax lots eighteen dash zero two dash zero four. Dash zero zero dash zero one five one one and eighteen dash zero two dash zero four dash four two. Dash zero one three zero zero in addition to Linda Lane and Mount Verden Road rights of way. Um, this is resolution number four, resolution annexing uh, annexation of certain territory to the city of Springfield pursuant to section five point seven. Of the Springfield Development Code and Jeff Pascal's here for the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilors. Uh, before you, the resolution that you see as uh, Neil read in the title. It's the initiation process. So this basically is giving ca- uh, city staff the direction to start the application process for annexation. Which um, as you saw with Tom's presentation, which is culminating in that public hearing. That's what you'll see. We'll start the staff process, the review process, and then the public notice process. And bring that back to you for a public hearing with the staff report and findings. Um, as you'll see in the um. Council briefing memorandum in the timeline, the earliest anticipated with approval tonight would be June. Um, to see that public hearing. Um, one thing to note is there was a bit of a communication issue, mostly on my end. The uh, resolution lists two exhibits. There's really only one exhibit. Um, both the items are addressed on that one exhibit. It's uh, attachment three. And so I have a recommendation in con- consultation with the um, city attorney's office on how to adopt. Or approve that resolution. Um, the really, the intent of the resolution is just so council knows what they're approving. So what they're giving direction to the city staff to do. There is really no action as far as that property tonight, other than initiating the application process. Um, the two attachments listed were maps. Both maps are on one map and that's where the confusion is. There's a vicinity map and then the map that shows the actual area of annexation and so. Um, in consult- consultation with Christina from the city attorney's office. Um, if the council were just to adopt resolution four with attachment through three included in place of exhibit A and B referenced. In the published resolution, we should be good.
I'm about to repeat that slowly.
Uh, to adopt resolution number four with attachment three. Included in place of exhibit A and B referenced in the published resolution.
Good. Victoria?
And just a quick question, and you and I talked about it uh, prior in the um, prior meeting. But to confirm that in this annexation request um, process, it includes Linda Lane. But the, there is no plan within this to upgrade, develop, do anything with the. Um, the right of way of Linda Lane, that is, just wanted to confirm that.
At this time, no, it's a county right of way. Um, in their jurisdiction, it's considered a local access road. And so I am unaware of any plans that the county has with the right of way and the city has no plans at this time with the right of way, other than initiating annexation.
Cause it will no longer belong to the county, it'll belong to the city, but then there was something about.
Doesn't necessarily trigger jurisdictional transfer, but um, we could get into a lot of details on how the county treats local.
Right.
Access roads, but it, in essence, the county doesn't really um, manage local access roads.
Yeah.
That's the, in the title.
That is definitely what I have seen in my experience. Thank you so much for confirming that.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number four with attachment three, including exhibit A and B resolutions.
Second.
Neil, could you call a vote?
Bruce, I wanna make sure I said that right.
Actually, hang on, it's um. And I'm gonna just email it to you just so you have it there in front of.
Okay, perfect. All right, hang on there.
Unsecond to the, yeah.
And second the motion and un-motion and.
Unmotion in the motion.
Withdraw my first motion and make another motion. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number four with the attachment three included in place of. Exhibit A and B referenced in the published resolution.
Thank you. Second.
Neil?
Yes, Council Weber.
Yes.
Council Mo.
Yes.
Council Rodley.
Yes.
Council Doyle.
Yes.
And Council Pictionary.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, five yeses, zero nos, and Jeff, keep the communication up with the, with the neighbors. I know there's a lot of interest in this and dates and time lines wouldn't continue to mean a lot to them. Next item, please.
Any business from the city council?
Is there any business? No.
Corey?
Well, I guess we should say happy birthday. Council Weber, I didn't know it's your birthday, but happy birthday.
Thank you.
You're keeping it on the down.
Keep it on the down.
But now it's in a public meeting forever.
Yes, yes, it is.
Did you have any other, okay.
That's it.
Next item, please.
Next item under business from the city manager. Item number one is Anne's Heart Funding. Erin Feifield is here for the staff report. Sorry, Anne Feifield and Katie Carroll are here for the staff report.
Um, yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. Katie Carroll and I are here tonight with uh, the request before you from Anne's Heart. To increase their budget uh, up to six hundred thousand dollars from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund. ARPA, if we will. Um, as you may recall, Anne's Heart is a five O one C three nonprofit founded in twenty sixteen. Here in Springfield, whose goal is to provide long-term housing to unhoused women. Their project is to buy a house here in Springfield in order to house up to six unhoused women. This would not be a drop-in shelter, uh, but more like transitional housing with the aim to provide stability and case management. For women to move on to permanent housing. So a brief history, if you will, on how we got here. Um, these ARPA funds are federal dollars that came to the state and were allocated as part of the twenty twenty-one legislative session. Uh, each representative and senator in Oregon received an allocation to put toward projects in their districts that they saw had an unmet need. Representative Lively, in consultation with the city, put forward four projects, one of which was six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. For long-term affordable housing. This allocation was initially made up of two projects. One, a homeownership project by Square One Villages, and the other, a transitional housing project for up to six unhoused women. Namely Anne's Heart. In February and April of twenty twenty-two, during two work sessions last year. Staff brought a list of potential projects to city council, discussing affordable housing and social services to receive council direction. During those two work sessions, council gave direction to staff that they supported funding Anne's Heart for their capital project needs to buy a house. But they did not support helping fund operating costs. We also learned at the time that unfortunately, the Square One Villages C Street Extension Project. Was no longer viable. Council at the time indicated they were still supportive of using the ARPA dollars just for Anne's Heart. Um, they did wanna limit funding for Anne's Heart to only five hundred thousand dollars at the time, but said. Anne's Heart could return and request additional funds if needed. Following that council work session, um, and the support given for Anne's Heart, the city then signed the agreement in your packet that you see with the Department of Administrative Services. Laying out the expectations for the use of those six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Which brings us to today and the request before you by Anne's Heart, who's asking to increase their amount for up to six hundred thousand dollars. Um, as laid out in the letter, they give reasonings, giving the increase in the housing market and real estate prices. Um, and so working within the existing ARPA agreement funding, Anne's Heart is asking for authority for up to six hundred thousand dollars. Um, that they say would give them a greater opportunity to purchase a home in this market. So just some quick po- some quick points and then I'll stop. Um, the award to Anne's Heart is a direct reimbursement award. It is not a grant to use as they choose. Um, funds need to be used to purchase a home, but could also be eligible for pre-purchase and closing costs. Funds are not eligible for repairs or renovations or operating costs. Anne's Heart will be required to purchase a home by. Uh, by May first, twenty twenty-four, um, and to be operating within two years. Uh, they would need to run the home for ten years. Otherwise, it would be required to return the funds to the city. Or work to transfer the home to another organization for a similar price.
Joe? So, I'm talking about this earlier last week, what not, the, is this the plan? Or the only plan is right, you're already in stipulations on move-in, or is there additional work being done?
So I didn't catch the question.
Well, you're talking about conditions, stipulations, right? Must be in New Springfield, must, must.
Oh, describing that is their proposal, yeah, that is the project.
Okay, so tha- has that plan been approved and or is there any additions to that plan that's going to be made, or is that final? Other words, during the negotiations that the city manager's gonna have. Is there expecting to be some more additional information, or is that? We give her the authority to go ahead and enter into that negotiation and come up with a uh, mutually agreeable.
That, yeah, that's the um, the request tonight is to grant the city manager the authority to negotiate and execute.
I just wanna make sure that was.
Yes.
Final product. Thank you.
Corey?
Yeah, and I was just gonna follow up on that and say, I, I, I mean, I'm fine with this and I appreciated you reminding us. Of the decisions we'd already made around not operational and all of that, and I have confidence in the city manager to kind of get all the ducks in a row. And I mentioned you reminding us that if things fall apart, it could come back to us. So it's not, you know, so I understand the risk though. I appreciate that historical context and have confidence that our city manager can handle it.
Victoria?
So I just wanted to comment because um, and give a shout out to Reverend June. Because I remember when I was on the C D A C committee in twenty sixteen, this project was brought just kind of as an idea. And I remember that happening and thinking, this is a great idea, but we didn't know how we were gonna pay for it. And how it was gonna happen. And so um, I think, you know, a shout out to, to Representative Lively too, for bringing this forward. And for us being able to see this to fruition. I, I really am excited to, you know, having heard something as an idea and now see it actually happen to where it could help. Um, women in our community is, is pretty awesome. So thanks for the work that you do.
Anybody else? Right, I've got just a couple, a couple of comments before we take the motion. Um, yes, I think. I think uh, June, you getting this to the finish, closer to the finish line is, you know, it, it has been a Herculean task. Um, I also wanna just briefly talk about what I think the negotiation, but you know, but what we're authorizing the city manager to do. Because one of my big, of my concerns here is, this is just the capital component of it. And I really want Nancy to take into account that we really need to see the operating plan and what the plan is to finance it. And what, what's the plan to communicate with the neighbors and how do we sort of deal with that, you know, is a, you know, is sort of a transitional housing. It's gonna be cited in a neighborhood and that communication plan and dealing with questions around everything from, you know, law enforcement to parking. To just everything about it really needs to be, be re- be reviewed, be reviewed. Um, I, if Nancy's comfortable, I'm comfortable, but I really just wanna say that out loud in, in public and ask her to take all of that into consideration. When, when the uh, nonprofit comes forward with her operating plan, because I think that's the key to success here.
Can I ask an order of operations question?
Sure.
Um, so the part of the request being to authorize the city manager to negotiate any and all. So that include the loan agreement plus any other. In one version, I see this playing out, is the loan agreement being signed, authorizing them to go find that house. And then it's within that two-year agreement to be able to have it up and running. And I guess I'm. The operating plan, do you see that happening before the loan agreement is happening, or are you saying within those two years to make sure?
I, I.
That plan.
My opinion is, is in the after component, right? Like, I think the nonprofit needs an okay for us that we will back. You know, them have shopping around for a home for this at six hundred thousand dollars, but between the part when they sort of purchase and have a location. And the part when we actually sort of, you know, sort of execute and start operating, that is where, that is where. That conversation needs to happen. Because I think we got the big component of this sort of solved, but like the, just the operating funds and everything about it is still up in the air. Joe?
Yeah, and I, I think um, it would miss me, well, Nancy, it'd be important to get your input too. On this, because to me, it seems that. I don't know if I would loan money or give money to somebody if I'm not sure what they plan to do with it. I understand the basics, you know, certain rules, but would you give money to somebody? With the understanding that this is what you're gonna do, but you don't have the rules laid out and then. We give them the money to buy the property and then the rules become ambiguous or not followed, then where you do. So you have to seize the property, or should you not have that in place before you sign on the bottom line?
Um, in response to your question, Councilor Pictionary, I would work closely with the city attorney's office as well to make sure that we have some benchmarks. That would need to be met uh, prior to uh, purchasing a home. Uh, there are a number of factors that need to uh, go into place. Uh, it's a, it's a great concept. And I think, you know, the council supports the idea of helping uh, these women in need. Uh, there, the devil is in the details here. So I will put my, you know, you, you all know that I have uh, experience in county governance, so I'll flip a little bit of my county hat on. Um, when I worked for Sacramento County, they used a scattered site housing model. Uh, for um, this type of population. And so there is some, you have some experience in working in these type of structures. So there's some things we can draw on and look at, but you definitely wanna make sure that the city has the ability to uh, cover our interests. So that if, in any event that this program, you know, we know that this is a new program, um, that we have a way for that. for that home to either be returned to the city, um, you know, you can also at times with nonprofits, uh, move to another nonprofit. So we would have to talk more with the city attorney's office about, uh, what kind of, you know, for lack of a better word, a clawback agreement that we would have, uh, if certain, um, benchmarks were not being made. But what an important factor, of course, would be, uh, working with the, the neighborhood and the community. So that's another component is just, you know, making sure that we have the right structures in place so that we can be a good neighbor. So that the, we'll, we want this to succeed is the whole outcome here.
Yeah, and, and my concern is, is that it's very clear with the receivers of this, of this funding that we already have some rules in place or an agreement in place that's very clear. So we don't have to, I don't really want to be participatory in taking property back. And now we have a six, seven, eight bedroom house that the city now owns and we're like going, okay, now what do we do with this? So it'd be great to be able to have, you know, to enter an agreement with all involved saying, okay, we're all playing on the same sheet of music. We all agree this is what we're gonna do. Pull the trigger as opposed to trying to play catch up.
Correct. You know, I think that that's an excellent point and we, we do have time here. That's a benefit. I think also we want to look at interest rates and, you know, because that affects housing prices overall in the marketplace. Um, and how houses are moving. So, you know, we want to look at what's happening in the market. I know they have some ideas for, um, the the size of house that they will need as far as number of bedrooms, so that also automatically kind of puts some, some restraints on what we would be looking at. Um, but you're right, we need to flesh out the operational elements as well as the logistics of purchasing the home.
Yep, and I'd support that as long as we have that in place.
Yeah. Right, any other comments or questions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve a budget of up to $600,000 for Anne's Heart to use for the purchase of a home in Springfield to house up to six women and authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute all documents.
Second.
Neil.
Yes, Council Weber.
Yes.
Council Mo.
Yes.
Council Rodley.
Yes.
Council Doyle.
I.
And Council Pictionary.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, five yeses, zero nos. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Any other business from the city manager?
No further business, thank you.
Any business from the city attorney?
No business.
All right, thank you, everybody. We are adjourned.